That's awesome.
Andrea, I have slides that I can screen share so you can take it to me whenever you're.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to talk this Thursday, September 17th. Retreat of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to Order. So just to quickly review the agenda, tonight's main focus is on board communication. How we can be more or how we can continue to improve our responsiveness communication that come to the board? And to be sure that we're following all the proper protocols outlined by the state related to open public. So we'll talk briefly, not briefly, but we'll talk and hopefully get to some resolution about how we'll handle. Email that come to the board, talk a bit about our board communication strategy overall and how we reflect that. On our website and then our communications to the public and then have a review from our. On high level details about the open public meetings app. So before we start, I just want to remind everybody to mute their mics when they're not talking. I hear a little bit of a. Echo, but I don't know if that's just me. But just to kick this first item off with the email protocol, I've talked to many of you about. Our approach to handling email in my time on the board. The volume of email that we received has only gotten bigger and bigger through the years. It is especially. A large volume when there are pressing issues that are really pressing in the community. When there are unresolved challenges that we're still working through in this time of responding to COVID-19. All of our, all of the constituents in our community, families, students, community partners, everyone has questions about. What's currently happening and has input and feedback that they want to communicate to us. But as we all know, the role of a member of the school board is largely a volunteer role. We don't have like full time, each of us, it's not like the city council, we don't have staff that's assigned to us to support us. We don't have staff that can do research for us. We are like a largely a. Self-contained crew. We've got support definitely from Carla and the team. But we are not the same kind of publicly elected officials as some of our colleagues on city council, county council, et cetera. So I think that we have all talked about this individually, about how we triage and manage the email that come to us, how we. Differentiate between those email messages that really are questions for Carla and members of the leadership team. Or that are truly questions for the board. Some of them we have answers to because we've talked about it and we've got a clear direction to move forward. And some of the questions that come to the board are not topics that we've had an opportunity to discuss as a group or to come to resolution about. So we really do need some opportunity to either indicate to the sender that this is a topic that we haven't discussed. And we'll raise it to my colleagues and get back to you, or it's something that we need more time to address. So the real high level goal of this discussion is to get to some. Resolution about how we will really triage those emails. And I think this can combine item number two as we think about. Tracy and her role and how she can potentially with feedback from Carla, how she can potentially help support us in. Managing the volume that comes. So again, triage generally. But then also a layer to this email protocol conversation is, and I think I've talked to some of you about this too. Is I think we should establish some guardrails or expectations about how quickly and we want to be able to get responses out to members of the community. I think it might be unrealistic to ensure 24 hour turnaround for every message that comes. But what's our guideline or what's our, what's our North Star in terms of our goal for getting responses out to folks? So I guess I'll open it up to feedback, but really within the context of. What would be our ideal in terms of responsiveness and response time? And how do we want to handle getting quick responses to email that's really for Carla and the team? But it comes in large volume as opposed to email that is really targeted at the board on topics that we haven't known answer to or can get one pretty quickly. And topics that we haven't had a chance to discuss, but the sender still needs some response back from us. I'll just stop with my background overview and open it up for your input. And also if you want to add other. Layers to this conversation, please feel free to do so. I'll start with Elizabeth.
Okay, I think there are a couple of questions we have to decide before we even get to, you know, timing. And I think one of them is who's doing the responding? And first of, first I, you know, I think it's important for, for all of us to remember and understand in the public to remember and understand that it's best practice on board. On school boards for emails that are sent to the entire board or even individually, but individually sent to each board member. To be responded to by the board president. Because that way, you know, it's because what Andrea, I mean, sorry, Director Cobb had already talked about was that it's, it's. The school board's work as a system and we will, if we don't, if we have not collectively chatted about something and decided on it. We really don't have a response yet. So I want to, I want to address that fact, the fact that if the, if the expectation from the public is that they've sent an email. And nobody's getting back, it's probably because we haven't all talked about it. So we are waiting for that opportunity. So I think at some point. We also talked about because the, the. Volume of emails is becoming more. Unmanageable that we were thinking about maybe setting up a board email versus having people send it to each one of us. So that it goes into the board email. Have you talked about that? I missed it if you did. You're on mute.
I did not mention that tonight, but I actually think it's my understanding from Dan that that has happened. And so we need to, if you haven't already, and I'm sorry if this communication didn't get you, that might've been my fault. But if you haven't already, if you refresh your Outlook, you may see another account show up there. Lisa's nodding her head. So you can see board. So yes, thank you for raising that Elizabeth, and I'm sorry about that. So the structure has been created and you're on mute again, just so you know.
Okay, thanks. So great. So now that we have the structure where it's all going into the board, I guess the question is. Who monitors that account? And that is where the conversation with Tracy Jones are new. The board secretary comes into play, I guess. So it's kind of like, I'm not sure which thing we need to discuss first. But it seems to me that it makes sense for Tracy to monitor that the incoming messages and at that point. If it's really meant for administrative response, meaning Carla and someone from her team, that that just gets immediately directed. To Carla with an email to the person saying. You know, that thank you for, thank you for writing. I forwarded this to the superintendent and you know, you can expect an answer. Shortly, you know, whatever, however, we're going to do that. And then what's left in there would be. What we'd be talking about, how do we, how do we respond? Does that, am I, I'm seeing Lisa nod and Andrea nod, but I don't know Enrique, yeah.
I want to pause and let Carla weigh in on that. I think she has a good sense of what's possible with support from Tracy. So I want to give Carla a chance to react to that.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good plan. And so if it comes into the board, Tracy can look at it. She can shoot it to me. You know, it's sometimes I can respond right away with a copy to you. I guess that's the other piece is I want you always to get a copy so that you know it has been responded to. Or sometimes we need to, Dan, to, you know, to find the facts or sometimes Tracy and, you know. And Tracy and I can work together on this in the beginning because many times it's Lisa Nolan. That's the only one that knows the answer. So she's got to answer it. Or it's Ed in IT. And so as Tracy gets to know who's who and she can talk to me, we'll get it sent to whoever can do an answer. They'll answer it and I'll, you know, I'll look at it and then we'll send it out on your behalf, you know, with a note that says, thank you for your inquiry to the board. We afforded it to the person most appropriate to answer your question. And then they have the input and then we give you a copy of it so you know it's made the loop. Does that make sense?
I'm seeing that in head. Any comments about that?
And then if you, what also happens though, and so you got to talk about how you want to handle that. Is sometimes people just look at who, you know, they don't look at the webpage. They know that Elizabeth's school is. I don't know what one of your schools is Elizabeth, but Foss, I think Foss is yours. And so they say, okay, so they've got a problem or a praise about Foss. And so they write it straight to Elizabeth. Well, sometimes it seems to me that all of you should know, you know, what that looked like because nine times out of 10 ends up being a bigger issue than, you know, than just at Foss. And so you have, you have to decide how you guys want to handle that. Do you want to do the same thing? I mean, I will, I'll be honest, my preference. Is that you shoot that to me too. And that we respond on your behalf. Now, if Elizabeth gets an email that says, thank you so much for visiting Foss. You came into my classroom. I love you. Thank you so much. Then, you know, Elizabeth can answer that because that's totally Elizabeth's stuff. But if it's, I hate the way you're doing discipline in this district. This happened to so and so. It seems to me that's something you all want to be a part of, but you guys have to decide. I'm, I'm jumping around there. Those are the hard ones. When you get something from a citizen. And it's directed just to you, you know, how do you want to handle that?
I'll start with Lisa. Oh, sorry, Director.
I feel a study session, we can be slightly less formal. So to your point, Carla, the way that, I mean, in. In what it felt like a nanosecond of being on this board before COVID hit. There was, there was protocol that I was learning how to do and my understanding. Has been and the way that I've operated has been when I get an email directed to me, then I respond by including the rest of the board and you. And, and so now, you know, now that Tracy's on board, you know, whoever was in Tracy's world previously. Like making sure, like responding to it to say, thank you for responding to me. And if I have any knowledge or, you know, if it's. Not knowledge, but if it's appropriate for me to even as a board director, respond to whatever that email is. And then to follow up by, you know, asking the superintendent, could you please, you know, have you or someone from your team respond? And I feel like that, that has worked well for me. And that's what I recall before everything went sideways. And became really chaotic in just communicating because like the communication. That we've had to process and try to respond to and track, we've had so many transitions within just the six months. Of that period. And so like I literally like sometimes lay, I like, I wake up in the morning and go, oh my God, did I even, I don't even know. Like, I don't know which way is up. So, and, and I know, like I've talked to, you know, all, well now four, three other board members and that. You know, the importance of wanting to be responsive and to people who do email us, but what is it our role? When is it really operational? And most of the time it's operational because people don't actually email us in my experience so far, asking about policy. And, and governance, which is really our responsibility. So there's a lot of misconception of what is our responsibility. So. That's a lot to say to.
So I think the structure of having this board email, I think that we can push our emails that are really operational nature that come to us into the board. Now, like respond, but CC the board and then it'll get in the queue for Tracy to push through to like if we're responding and saying, thank you for your email. I don't know if that creates like an unnecessary step. I, I was saying that initially because it creates visibility to the whole of us. Without it having to come into each of our individual inboxes again. So if you're the one that came to you. CC the board response and then it becomes visible on the board queue and. The queue of emails that Tracy might be pushing out to Carla and team and then is also visible to the rest of us. So I don't know if that, if that workflow or that flow makes sense, but that was immediately what came to mind. Enrique, were you going to comment? Were you going to say something?
Yeah. So it seems like there's probably. As we've talked about lots of different types of messages coming in, some are just statements, right? Some are actual. Questions that we as a whole board probably know the answer to. We've discussed it. There's policy, there's mission, vision. We've already discussed and we could. Give a concise response to, to the sender. There's also essentially a question about a new maybe controversial issue that hasn't been discussed by the board where they want. Like a board decision. We could say this is not something that the board has made a decision on. If they're push or something, I think it's okay to say your personal views, but not to say they're coming from the board if it's something that hasn't been discussed by the board. But then. There's a whole lot of things we get that are really operational that are outside of our purview and we may not have the details of. And we may know parts of it and it can be sticky if we try to answer something and get some of the details wrong. Then the public gets the wrong impression that they either get the wrong answer for a while and go the wrong way. Or someone looks bad, either us or the, or someone at admin. So I think that there's a big group of messages that should go to. They can come to us. Whether or not they're intercepted, quote unquote, intercepted by Tracy and Carla's team first answer. I think it'd probably be good that to come back to the board, the answer to us first, if you can see it in case we want to add something to it. If it's something. Purely operational, I think you can go right back to the sender and CCS. If it's something that has vision, mission. Questions about it, maybe it should come back to the board before it goes back to the sender. That's a lot of different steps potentially in there. So. You know, there's, there's not all the time in the world to do all these, but we, the key is communication and being open to the public, being receptive. And then communicating what, what, what is being done at Tacoma schools and what is being planned to, to occur. So, thanks.
You're muted, Andrea.
I know, I'm sorry. I think Elizabeth has commented and then I see your hand, Carla, but I'll. Elizabeth, did you have a comment or no? Okay, Carla, sorry about that.
Um, I just wanted to say, and I, I agree with Enrique that, you know. I don't know why, but it seems like just over the last two years, you've gotten so many more operational questions that really. You know, so I don't like this curriculum at first grade. What are you going to do about it? Which is, you know, or where did it come from or how are we supposed to teach it? Well, that's an operational question that, you know, that you shouldn't, that, that, that shouldn't, you know, that you shouldn't have to answer. But one of the things I think you can do is if you want to have, you know, number one, so that should be shot to me. I'll get it to Marie Verhar. She'll answer it. We'll send a copy to you. If you want to add a comment to it that you, you know, that you think is appropriate, then maybe one of the things you could do. I mean, I think it complicates it and makes it longer. So I'm going to say that. But if you think, oh, I really want to add something to that and just let us, just let me know when you send it to me. Carla, send it back to me. I want to add a comment. And then I'll know and I'll get it right back to you and let you do that. How about that? The other thing that's important and also important is that if it's operational. And because you guys know, because of all the different things that you've done in, is that there's so many sides to the issue. So it really helps me. If you don't give an opinion about it ahead of time, you know, like, yeah, you're right. We should do it that way and then send it because then it makes it harder for us to answer. Because you have a lot, your, your voice has so much weight, but that's where at the end you can come back and say, wow. Maybe we need a policy about that and I'm going to look at it because that's your role is to look at maybe a policy that governs that. So that's perfect. If you want to comment about a policy or governance that you, you know, when you get it back.
Can I, can I get a clarification, Carla? Because I think you're exactly right. And I was. Sort of a little worried about when, you know, when Enrique said, well, we can, you know, we can agree or disagree with the, well, and I, so I see what you're saying, Carla is, yeah, we don't want to do that. But what you just said at the end was a little confusing. So what I think what you're recommending is that once you, you do an answer and it goes back to the sender. To the original enquirer, the person who was inquiring originally. Then if one of us has seen the answer and said, oh, wow, I didn't know we did that, or I don't know why we do that. Then to initiate a conversation with you and with the other board members about the policy, not to question the policy in the email.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly what I mean.
Clear that we're, yeah, no, that's fine. It's just that it's, I think it's hard. Because a lot of us are new to this and, and, and don't know the details of how a lot of things function, even the history of why a lot of these, I mean. Andrea might, she's been here a while and she, you know, her work at OSPI, she may know why some of the things, decisions were made. But I think it's really important that we all, if, if one of us has a question to something, I think we've gotten pretty good about. You know, sending you a quick email or giving Josh a call or saying, you know, gee shucks, this is, I thought, that took me by surprise, you know, what, what, and explain it to me. And then we've many times then brought, raised those issues up to the full board and made changes. So I think that is the power of the board.
Yeah, I just, I just want to acknowledge Enrique's initial comment though and offer that I do think it is. Within, I think it's okay to, and maybe you're saying the same thing in this exchange and I see your hand, Lisa, sorry about jumping in. But I do think it's okay to validate the question. Like if you, if, oh, that is a good question. I think that's. We right, like, feel like that, oh, that's a reasonable question. And then.
Absolutely.
With Carla and Elizabeth's points acknowledging though too, that we may not have the backstory on the why it is this way. You get the backstory and the why you're like, I think that's dumb, but it is that way because there's some rationale. But I think in the moment in the response, it is okay to validate the person's question if you agree. Rather than, and that's different than saying, yeah, we should do it that way if they offer something that we're not doing that. I think there's a just. A distinction between those two.
Exactly. That's good.
And Lisa?
Yeah, something that I would just add to all of this is. What I think has also been helped, would, might be helpful is when people email the board and have an expectation, you know, as it's been. Or, you know, I think to some degree still is where they'll email each of our individual emails. And then, but send it to all of us collectively to, to also, I think it's helpful maybe on the board website webpage. To say, you know, here's the protocol, here's what to expect when you reach out and maybe even add something. And maybe this is, you know, more in Renee's lane, but something about, you know, being as a consensus board. That, you know, these are the, these are the limitations or the. Expectations and, and legal requirements on how we can respond in communication. I think having that is also. Because frankly, until I got into this position, I had all kinds of misconceptions. And so I guess, you know, one of my hopes out of this is that we can help educate the public so that they. So that they know what the expectations are, so that, that, that we're on a, so we can build that trust. So that they know what to expect from us and then we can be responsive to that and set those, you know, model those expectations. I mean, we, you know, our teachers say that all the time, right? They model behavior, model expectations. And I feel that that's really where we have this really. Great opportunity to like recalibrate some of that because, and, and shortly we're going to be bringing on another new board member. So making sure that we have really clear defined. Processes and roles so that we know what to expect of ourselves and each other. And then also we can extend those, the expectations to the community. Because then we, we are in more of a collaborative relationship. And we can be responsive rather than constantly being reactive to things that we either see in the news, see on social media. Where we think, oh my gosh, we have to do something now and figuring out like what, you know, like just having that. Structure I think is going to be, it will help my dizziness in all of this, if, if nothing else.
And I see your hand, Renee, but just before you go, I just want to call out clearly that what Lisa just proposed or suggested in terms of. Communicating expect, what to expect when you reach out to the board, something that reflects what she just said and where, what, where we land on this. On our protocols is what I hope that we could get to in terms of updates to the board's page where, where it says how to contact us. So. Wherever we land in these expectations and in terms of like turnaround time, maybe there's a differentiated expectation for. Questions that are operational and that go to the superintendent, you can expect so much time, questions about policy, so much time and questions about. New policy regulations may take a little longer, like something that gets at some of that along with the other expectations and considerations that Lisa was talking through. But I just want to look that up. Hopefully someone's taking notes that can get translated into the website updates. But go ahead, Renee. Sorry about that.
No, thank you. And Dan Bopel and my executive assistant, Susan Anderson, who used to be in Dan's department, so she's the perfect collaborator for us, is. Helping us look at this to where we, we've realized that it's confusing for the public to know where to go when they have a complaint. It's that it's sometimes hard to ask. Know how to escalate it from a school issue. So we want to look at getting. Clear information so that sometimes people email the board and, and really they have a complaint or concern about something else. So we want to help make that. Easier as well. But you're absolutely right, Lisa. I think we can get, Dan and I can work on language as far as helping people to understand that expectation. I've seen people come to a board meeting before and make public comment and then be surprised that the board doesn't engage back with them. So I think we can even clarify there as well.
Thank you. Carla?
And I did, one other situation that comes up on occasion is, you know, you may get a, an email that comes to you directly. And you know exactly what the answer is. And so it's, and you're, you want to answer it, you know? And so I think you should feel free to do that. Just make sure you send all of us a copy. So we know, we know what you said.
Um, so I don't want to cut this conversation short, but I do want to make sure we leave time in the backend for Renee's presentation and then in the middle for. I think a discussion that Carla can tee up related to Tracy and her role and what kind of support we can expect. But I just want to, I want to ask if folks have other topics on, other items on the topic of email protocol to raise up. But just to reflect back to us that I think I hear. but just to reflect back to us, that I think I hear us saying that we're going to use that board email to really coordinate Tracy's support for us, and getting messages that are operational, if they're out to the appropriate people. If there are messages that just come to us, and we know the answer, it's clear, we can take the lead on responding, but include Carla, I'll, I see your hand.
Well, I was going to say, sometimes it's better if you, like, you know, what most of you always do is send it back to me first, and say, does this look good? You know, because you don't, you don't want to make sure you don't cite something that's incorrect, that you just said we had 95 elementary schools, when really we only, you know, when we don't have that many. So if you send it to me real quick, I can go, yeah, that looks good, and then give it right back to you.
Thank you for that. Okay, so we're going to try to rally around board email for operational messages. Messages that come to the board email that really are board emails, but are about a topic that, that's known. That's where I feel like there's some discussion that still needs to be had. How will we handle board, like, email? I didn't get clear, I'm not clear where we're going there. So I want to go to Lisa and then Elizabeth.
So I think having, I guess, like, thinking about, like, a response time and expectation, I, I, I believe that it would be reasonable to say that it could take 48 to 72 hours to be able to respond, because I don't remember who said it first, but I, it might have been Elizabeth. But there are times when we're trying to track down one another and find time in the day to go, hey, are you aware of this? Or what are, you know, what are you hearing, what do you understand? And that takes time, and, and we spend a lot, I mean, I spend a lot of time doing that. And so I think that building in, so we're successful, so that we can be responsive responsibly, I think, like, like saying, okay, it is, it is reasonable to say it could take 48 to 72 hours, which isn't to say it will take that, but it could take up to, would be a suggestion I would have.
And, and I, I think that's a fair timeframe. You know, it depends, I guess, on, on, you know, again, where we are on the topic. We could always, if we're still haven't come to a, a policy decision as a board, we could respond within that short timeframe to say, we're still in the go, you know, we're still working on this, and, you know, we'll get back to you with more details when we've made a decision. So that's a separate thing. I guess I just want to be, be clear about the, the best practices as stated by WASDA, that, and others, and the National Board, School Boards Association, too, that because we're nonpartisan positions, there is, you know, and we're supposed, therefore, supposed to think of the collective five, we're supposed to be a consensus board, and of course, there are always going to be times when a board member or two feels strongly about an issue and, and actually vote against, you know, a, a policy. But once the board is approved, three people is all, is what it takes. And once three people have voted, and it becomes official board policy, then even the two that disagreed need to be responding in the affirmative, which may be confusing to the public. And, and this is very different than the legislature or city council, where there are partisan elections, and you, you know, you kind of stand with a, you, you're kind of known to be standing with a philosophy. We're here for the kids, and we're supposed to make a consensus decision. And I, I just don't think that the public really understands that. But that's one of the reasons that responses, unless they're specifically hyper-targeted to, to an individual, like, you know, Director Keating came to my school and read to, to the children, so I'm going to send her a thank you note. Anything else that's policy-related, regardless of who it comes to, it should be answered by the board president, and that is protocol, that is best practice. So I think we need to be careful about getting into, we all wanting to respond. And, 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 and I, so I think that we, if we, we may want to have input into the response. Or if you happen to know the person, and they've written to all of us, but, you know, maybe Director Keating knows somebody who's responding, then once the director, the, the, once, once Director Cobb responds on our behalf, and, and the email should always say, on behalf of the board, you know, we, and none of, no I, you know, we, we, we. And then once we all get a copy of it, because we're all copied, then I think each one of us can take the initiative, should we care to, or feel that it's appropriate, can respond again and say, you know, Sally, it was so great that you, that you reached out, I, I hope that this answers your questions. If you have further questions, give me a call. I mean, I think we just need to stick with, I'm, I'm a little afraid that what we were talking about is it's going to get a little ramshackle, where everybody's responding, because we feel like it. That's not good practice.
So Elizabeth, I really appreciate your comments, and I think you were headed, you went where I was trying to get to. I was trying to win all the, the universe of messages that need that response down. And I think that we will do that significantly by relying on some support from Tracy to help get those email messages that really are operational in nature, directed to where they need to go. And I, as current president, I know that I have some limitations, but I do agree with you that the messages need to come from the board. So I think as a next step for me, I need to huddle with Carla and Tracy and figure out a way to meet that obligation. So I think that's just the task of my, in moving forward, and we'll get there. But this triaging approach to get those messages that quickly need to respond and are not within the board's purview addressed, I think that will go a long way towards making that manageable.
Well, and just to be clear, I'm not suggesting you have to write all of them.
I get it.
And one of us could suggest that, you know, we know a lot about it, we want to write it, but it needs to come from you, is all I'm saying.
Got it. Thank you. I'll go to Lisa and then go to Carla.
So as we, and I, and I know that we do have some time constraints, but I'd like to suggest, in, in talking about communication, like, when I was running, like, communication was one of the biggest topics that I talked about with voters all the time. And so I think that if we take, like, build out some time to really study and learn together about effective communication, and what does that look like? And how do we effectively communicate as policymakers? And, and in the framework of the board, of a consensus board, how do we do that? And what is best practice, and how, how do other boards do it? And I think also because there are enough of us that are newer in this role, in these roles, I think it would be really helpful to just do some, you know, some, some learning about what does that look like? And as we, you know, like, like, I come from being very deeply engaged in social media, and I'm finding, like, that's very difficult in this role because of Public Records Act. And how, what can I say, what can I say, and what does that look like? And so even for me to learn, how do I, how, how does Lisa individually operate in the world? And how does, how, how does, you know, Director Keating operate in the world? And so I really feel like it would be helpful, at least for me, if we had, had, like, really looked into what is effective communication as policymakers? And how can we do that and still be engaging and, you know, responsive, not reactive? Because I think the problem that I'm experiencing with social media is this immediacy and demand of, you need to respond to me at this second. You need to react to me right now. And without any consideration, or even the opportunity to learn about, wait a second, what is it that, that I'm being asked to respond or react to? And I do not like being put in a position where I'm expected to be reactive, because that is not best practice. That is not how we stay aligned with the strategic plan and the goals that we set. And also, that's not a good leader. And so I think it would, for me, be really helpful if we carve out time to do that, to work together on, you know, on, on learning better, or maybe not even better, but what are some good ways to communicate in these roles?
Carla?
All I was going to say is reinforce what Elizabeth said, she's right, because I, I actually misspoke, because we'd be in a heap of trouble if everybody started rewriting and adding things to the end. So you're exactly right, Elizabeth, that we need to, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to focus and concentrate, then we need to look at, you know, we need to look at the feedback, and then, you know, stay true to that. So thanks, Elizabeth.
Yeah, and I appreciate the comments, Lisa, too, about the, getting out of a reactive stance, and really on cultivating some skills together around effective communication. So thanks for that.
Yeah, and I think that whole idea of what you're talking about, about putting some expectations and protocols, and what they can expect on the webpage, will really, at least, you know, have me something to say, hey, check out this section of the webpage, this is how we communicate.
So I'll take it as a, oh, anything?
So just confirming, so I think it'll be a lot less volume than coming to you as a president to answer the majority of these, if we get the ones that are process-based, going to Carla's team. And then if we feel like we can easily answer something, I think maybe all, eventually five of us could say, before we answer the, the person who sent us the message, we could send you a message saying, I'd be happy to answer that if you want. And send you and Carla the, our answer, particularly to review, and then Andrea can send it, just hit send. I don't know if that's too many steps or not, but.
I think I want to take some time quickly to huddle with Carla and Tracy to reflect on all of our feedback. I do think, though, that what, anything that comes to us only, you should, like, take, if it's something that's very clear, answer and respond, but, but maybe see, see that board address, so that there's just some visibility on the responses. Because it may be, too, that people send it to us individually, and seeing that one of us has already responded with a very clear technical answer, that means that all five of us don't need, all four of us don't need to respond, so we can kind of see that. But I think that, to your point, Enrique, I think we should see kind of how the volume, that, that it seems to shift in response to doing kind of this approach to triaging and getting those that need to go to Carla and quickly over to her. Let's see what the volume then still looks like, and go from there with figuring out how to potentially divide up the responsibility of crafting that email that goes out on behalf of the board. But I think that, I do think that the volume will be different, and we can maybe touch base in a couple of weeks and see how this is going. And I'm, I'm just thinking through, too, like, as we have this conversation about a protocol that's sustainable, not for individuals, but for the board. Like, as we reorganize in future years, and the president and the vice president changes, the people in those seats have different demands on their time, and on their schedules, and on their lives. How can we craft some protocols that are lasting and are, like, function, like, that just work? So I'm going to, I think we've got some good, a good start to this right now. And I can, again, loop back with Tracy and Carla to figure out how to get more precise about some of the ideas that we surfaced tonight. And maybe we can send you an email where we landed on some of this. And also, I expect maybe Renee and you and Dan working together, you said, are going to draft some language for changes to the board's page or unexpected. So we can make sure that we're all on the same page from there. Okay, any further comments on these items? I want to make sure, we only have 17 minutes left. I think the, item number three probably won't take too long. And then Renee, you have a couple of slides, I want to make sure we have time to get to it all. Any comments on this topic from board members? Okay, let's move on to item number three, then. Carla, I think that's you. You're muted.
I, I think you've covered, you know, a lot of what, you know, the email covers a lot of ground and takes care of a lot of the communication pieces. Tracy and I sat down together, because I know that, you know, the board needs support, and you really, you know, you don't have your own personal person. And so we thought, let's get together and make sure that the board members know exactly, you know, what they, so, what, what, you know, if they need support. And that doesn't mean that this is an exclusive list. You may need more support than that, and we totally understand that. But basically, we just wanted you to know, any, you know, any kind of information, Tracy's ready and willing, and of course, she's still in a incredible learning curve right now. So, you know, she may have to, you know, we may have to work together with Kathy and Maureen, and all the people come together to help her. But we want her, you to know that, you know, she will do, she will provide any kind of document retrieval. You know, if you want to know what happened to the, you know, what happened in the Friday Report, or when did this get mentioned, or whatever, then she, she's your person. And I know that, you know, so many of the times, I'll ask my staff something, and they'll say, it was in the Friday Report. And I'm like, I don't know where it was, and I don't know where it is, just get it to me, because I can't find it. And so we want you to have, you know, totally that ability. Anything about calendar and Tracy, you know, some of you may want to set up a time where you have a call to Tracy, so that if anything's coming up for the month, we'll try to preview it in the Friday Report. But, you know, like, there's a Safe Streets Luncheon today, and, you know, maybe you want a reminder that it, you know, there's a Safe Streets Luncheon at 12, so that you can come, so that, you know, so that you know all the time what's coming up. And of course, she'll do all your travel plans, if we ever get to travel again. You know, she's your person to go with that. And then any kind of, you know, information that you, any information that's established that, you know, has gone through you. And then, you know, the other thing is that then that I ask if, you know, if you want a unique or something that's, you know, you just decided that you really want it, you don't understand how this works, and you want to know what that's like. I just ask if you go through me, so that I can help to manage Tracy's time and make sure that, you know, she, she can, she's got the board, that's her, that's one of her primary jobs. She also does all the 504s for special ed. And she also has one other thing, so it's just a way to make sure, you know, that she's able to handle all your requests. I want your needs met all the time, and so does Tracy. And so we kind of brainstormed this list together. I don't know, Tracy, do you want to say anything?
Um, I think that, that covers it pretty much. I, I do have a steep learning curve right now, but I, I think I'm making great gains.
She is.
Still a, a steep learning curve, so just your patience. I do want to say that I think it would be very helpful if I could set up even like a video meeting with each of you, just so that I can have a chance to talk to you about what your, how you want to be contacted, what's the easiest way, if I really need to get ahold of you, what your preferences are for that type of thing, you know, and what I can do to support you within the guidelines, and what we could maybe do that is desperately needed, that we don't have listed here.
Right. Carla, I just want to thank you for inviting Tracy to speak. I was actually going to stop and say, I'm sorry, Tracy, that we're talking about you as if we're not here. We know you're here. Input, and if you have thoughts about how we can make any of what we've been discussing work, we're totally open to it. Please know that we value your membership and participation as part of this team. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And I would just, I, I would just like to add, I think the list, and as you described it, makes perfect sense. Superintendent, and I would just say that the one thing that isn't on there is what we've talked about tonight in great detail, which is the email. Coordinate, coordinating board communication, which, you know, is going to be a bigger deal. So, you know, as you, and Tracy are working through on her, on her plan, I'd make, want to make sure that bullet gets on there.
Sure, you're good, that's right, we will.
And, and I would also just suggest to Tracy, you know, it's, it's so awesome to have you. Maybe you could send each of us an individual email asking for a time and date, and, and allow us to, to get that going with you, so that you feel we're not strangers out there, and you actually get to know our personalities sooner rather than later. So whenever it's convenient for you.
I would love that, thank you.
Any other comments on this item, before we move on to Renee's refresher on the Open Public Meeting Act? Okay, we've got about 11 minutes, so I think we can maybe do it.
Thank you very much, President Cobb. I'm going to give a shot at sharing my screen. And are we there? Hopefully you can see board communication. Yes? So as we talk about communication, I wanted to frame it under the three principles of a school board's work. You work as a group, you work in public, and you work under the law. And so when you're thinking about communication, remember that you work as a group. So individual board members don't have the authority to give a response most of the time. You're really only supposed to be responding when you are all five in agreement on, maybe it's an issue that you've already taken action on. So that's where the caution comes in, even if you think you know the response, it's still the perception that it's an individual board member who is speaking on behalf of the board. And under Policy 1220, the only person who's supposed to do that is the board president or the board president's designee. So I think as we're, we're ironing out those email protocol, it would be a best practice to keep in mind that you want to it would be a best practice to, uh, keep in mind that, um, you want to be careful that board members are not speaking in a way that, uh, it could be perceived that they're representing the entirety of the board. Um, if there is an issue that a board member wants to escalate, uh, they can always ask for it to be placed on the agenda under Policy 1440. And then, um, also under Policy 1220, board members refer complaints to the superintendent. And so as I said, I think we can make it easier on our website to make it clear, here's how you file a complaint or concern and here's how you really address the board about a strategic issue. Here's an example. If a parent is frustrated about their student's IP, they feel like they're not getting the response they need from the school and the parent ends up emailing the board, this is really an operational concern. It's not strategic. And so an individual board member shouldn't reply or express an opinion. I know it's really tempting to go, oh my goodness, that's shocking. I'm so, uh, you know, upset to hear that that's happening. What you can do, like you said, President Cobb has validated, hey, this is a concern that we take seriously and we're going to ask the superintendent to follow up. So the second, uh, way that the board works is in public. And this is the Open Public Meetings Act. And in Washington, our law here is much more robust than many other states. The, the purpose of the Open Public Meetings Act is to promote government transparency. So Tacoma Public Schools fall squarely under this law. And it means that anytime there's a quorum, that the meeting has to be held in public. And for our purposes, because we're a board of five, um, anytime there is more than two board members together, then that's considered a quorum. So if there was a phone call with three board members on it, that's a quorum. And that would technically be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act unless the meeting was posted and the notice requirements were given and the ability to view along with the OPMA. Where it gets tricky as well is it applies to email. So if there is more than three board members on an email, then that's a quorum. And we also have to be careful that the board isn't taking action in that email. Now, if there's things like that are administrative, hey, what time do you want to have this meeting? Can you pass along this information? That's fine. If a board member sends something to all five board members and says, I'm, I want your input on this legislative agenda. Please follow up with me individually. That is also fine if you're not getting into a quorum. Remember, there are exceptions for executive enclosed sessions and that needs to remain confidential. So here's an example. The Dr. Seuss Fan Club sends an email to all five board members saying, hey, we really want a resolution declaring Dr. Seuss Day. It's strategic, but a board can't make a decision just by exchanging emails. So you don't want to have one board member say, oh, I love Dr. Seuss. That's a great idea. Let's, let's do this, right? Instead, it should be that, oh, we will make a, the president should respond saying that we're going to discuss this and make a determination about whether this, um, goes on the agenda. Um, so again, you don't want to jump to saying yes, um, when a constituent is asking you to do something. Um, you want to give space for that to go on the agenda. Okay, and then, don't lock up computer. There we go. Third principle is you have to work under the law. There's the citation to the Open Public Meetings Act in Washington. That's probably the most critical law year. We also have other laws in Washington that have been incorporated either through governance um, in our policies or other, uh, parts of the Common School Manual. Referenced again there, Policy 1220. I think that one's the most relevant here that board members have to act as a whole and the president is the spokesperson for the board. There's also other laws that outline collective bargaining and labor relations. And that's also something to keep in mind that when, uh, the, the, uh, there is a union negotiation going on under collective bargaining agreement, then there's a concept called direct dealing, where board members are not supposed to be directly negotiating. It's supposed to be the members of the bargaining team who are at the table, um, negotiating. So that's, uh, I think a watch out as well. Oftentimes when there's a labor dispute, the board gets lots of emails saying, we want you to do X, Y, and Z. Those emails get forwarded on to the collective bargaining team. So here's an example. Social media post demands, uh, that board member, more, board members intervene. Um, but there's designated bargaining teams. And although labor relations is, is a strategic concern, the specific negotiations are operational and have been delegated to the bargaining team. If a board member says, oh, you know what I read in this email concerns me, that board member can reach out to the leader of the bargaining team to have some, some questions answered. Um, but the board shouldn't make comments on bargaining unless it's an, uh, an approved statement by the bargaining team. Sometimes in particular union negotiations, there are additional rules put in place about what can be, um, communicated. But responding to a post, even in social media, could be viewed as direct dealing or interfering with the collective bargaining process. So just some, uh, some of the legal, um, considerations around, um, communication. And I know that was a whirlwind, uh, but if you have any questions, I'm ready.
Thank you for, okay, um, I see Lisa. So I'll go to Director Keating.
Um, I just wanted to thank you Renee for that presentation. And I feel like I've, um, had you on speed dial in the last, uh, nine months to go, whoa, 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 I don't know what to do here. What am I supposed to do? Um, and I think that what I really appreciate, um, and I believe this is a state, a factual statement, is that there's information on the board webpage talking, like with some language explaining the direct dealing. And, um, and, and I think for me, that's really helpful because I had no idea of any of that bef, as, as citizen. And, and then like there just becomes all of these limitations, but also there's, um, pressure and expectation on responding and how to respond and where to respond. And so I just appreciate, um, the really clear overview. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. And I really appreciate how, um, you and your fellow board members really have a seek to understand. Everyone on this board is so proactive about, uh, not coming in with a, uh, with a whole bunch of agenda items, but rather really seeking to understand and then find a way to make a difference. I really appreciate all of you.
Any other questions, comments, members of the board? No? Well, we have only three minutes left, so I don't want to open this can of worms. But I want to raise up that in career, um, in conversations ahead of this meeting with some of you, the topic of, um, how we will, um, handle public comment moving forward if we continue to be in a virtual meeting setting that doesn't provide the, that hasn't up to this point provided an opportunity for live comment. We've had some discussion in email and we mentioned it at our last board meeting. So I want to, um, connect with Carla and Renee probably to figure out a time where we can continue that conversation. I think that we need to, um, be mindful of and consider, um, current rates of transmission and what phase we're in, like, and so the point about when we will go back to regular, um, in-person meetings. I think we should look to examples of like city, in addition to knowing what a school district are doing, look to examples of other, um, entities in the city, like the city council, how they have a community forum opportunity that is more a live comments about topics that are on a broad range of issues. And we should reflect on our current practice related to public comment that unlike the city, hasn't really been tightly limited to items on that current business agenda. So I think that's a dynamic that we should think about as we think about public comment and what it means as opposed to communities, opportunities to speak and to share just their thoughts about issues related to the district or ideas that they have on broad set of topics. So again, we only have one minute left in this session, so I don't think we can get far, far on that conversation now. But I want to acknowledge that it is still a topic that we need to consider under the umbrella of like open public meetings and how we conduct our business. But, um, um, want to acknowledge that we don't have time to have that conversation now, but it's something that I know we want to get to some resolution about in the near term. Okay, any last comments, members of the board before we adjourn to executive session? Um, Director Leon?
I mean, maybe worth just telling public, I mean, are we allowed to say how many applicants we have and things like that? For, for purposes of next, the next session?
Yep. In keeping with our, um, schedule for appointing a new member of the board as a result of Director Heinz's resignation, the board is going to meet in executive session to review the qualifications of the applicants who have, um, submitted materials to be considered, um, to serve in that role. We have received nine applications and I think, um, we will plan to include the names of those applicants in the next, um, regular business meeting agenda as we have in the last two, um, appointment cycles. But this again is the beginning of the process of appointing a new member to serve on the board. Okay, Renee, any, I felt like you might want to add, but if not, we will adjourn and, um, reconvene in executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.